Seven seconds. Seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting, no order. Glad you're allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for As customary, we'll observe a moment of silence, and if you could, please keep the McManus family from Pembroke in your thoughts and prayers. Like or not, this meeting is being recorded and televised by WHCA. We'll seek a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll seek a motion to accept correspondence in the read file.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, public forum, come on up.
Good evening, Chair, thank you. Dawn Byers, volunteer with the Whitman Cultural Council, and I wanted to introduce Lieutenant Michael Loring with the Plymouth County K-9 Department.
Yep.
And his family. We're here just to celebrate Whitman Day and thank the Board for your vote back in Jojo and Lila have been our honorary parade leaders for this Saturday to kick off Whitman Day with the Puppy Parade at 11:30, sorry, 10:30 in the morning.
I'm Jojo.
Jojo and Lila. So we just wanted, again, to thank the Board for your support back in January. Omicron was scary back then. We asked you to give us a chance on Saturday, June 25th, for a community-wide festival funded by the Mass Cultural Council, funded by grants, not from the town's operating budget, and we're excited. So if you want more information, you can go to the website whitmanday.com, and you can meet us in the park with our cookies and to celebrate the town of Whitman and all of the culture that we have in the community.
That's good.
Thank you for this time. Oh, and I'll share flyer if you'd all...
Thank you.
Actually, those were passed out last Thursday at the concert, and we gave them to Mary Holland at the Senior Center to put in the Meals on Wheels and share with the seniors.
Thank you, Dawn, thank you for all the hard work that...
Maybe we can get a quick picture?
You and the Cultural Council have put into it. Just to move things along a little bit, if you don't mind, I'm going to take a couple things out of order. I know Mr. Howard was, had a couple things to go over. Mr. Simonak unfortunately cannot be here this evening, so we will not be discussing mold remediation, I believe, just possible regional agreement.
Thank you for having me. So yeah, in our last school committee meeting, we had, well, in several school committee meetings, we have continued to talk about the regional agreement. As the Board knows, that agreement is 30 years old. We did do a subtle amendment to work through some of the statutory changes, but it is a 30-year-old agreement. So in the past, what the school committee had done is created the regional agreement subcommittee, which is a subcommittee of the school committee. That was comprised of two selectmen from each towns, as well as two school committee members from each town, as well as, I believe, both town administrators and at least one citizen at large. So it was a fairly large group. So what we wanted to do was approach both the Whitman Board of Selectmen and the Hanson Select Board and just really ask two simple questions, which is, one, what is the appetite for us to, because it is a tri-party relationship between the schools and both towns, what is the appetite from the town to get together and rework this? And then, two, do you have any feedback on the composition of the committee? So rather than us creating this committee and then coming to you in the spirit of collaboration and communication, we really thought it would be a better idea to have at least a preliminary conversation, get thoughts from both towns, and then create the subcommittee, if you will. So those are really the two questions, really looking for your input in terms of your appetite to move forward with reworking the regional agreement, and then if you have any thoughts on what the composition of that committee should look like.
Anyone before?
Can you start?
Absolutely, I think Whitman is committed to our partnership and definitely looking to stay in the region and fully aware we need to do something with the agreement. From an outside perspective looking, and the last time, I thought that committee was a little too large myself, cut a hamstring things a tad bit, and I think probably a lot of the legwork with the regional agreement has been done. Certainly, we're going to have some sticking points, but I would just say probably narrow down the size of the committee.
Great.
I may. What does Hanson's Board of Selectmen, how do they feel on this issue?
So we haven't met with them. I'm going to go to their next meeting, I think, two weeks from Tuesday, so you can, I'm going to ask the exact same questions, so that'll be publicly televised and go from there. But obviously, it's a three-way tango, if you will, so we need all three dancing partners to come to the table and do this together, so.
Do you know if they're still looking at possibly de-regionalizing?
I don't, I don't know their full position on that.
And also, if we do form a committee and we do come up with some type of a change in the regional agreement, does it have to be approved by both town meetings?
Yes, yes, I'm 99% sure of that.
I'm asking a question, I already know the answer to.
Yeah, I was the, one of, if not the Whitman Selectmen, I don't remember the exact composition of the committee before, that served in it last time. Yeah, a lot of the legwork's already done, and I agree with our chairman that less is more in this kind of situation, especially where it has to come back to the full school committee, the both boards and then town meetings for final approval. I don't think there's necessarily, we're not leaving out any opportunities for public input, it's just trying to get an agreement together.
Awesome. Is, I think I'd like to see some sort of representation, like, not say best practices, but somebody who is involved in the negotiation, who's been involved in many of these negotiations, who knows about regional agreements and who can give some guidance as far as how things are often done. I think having somebody involved that can really speak from experience and know, like, this is what's been done in the past, and here's some tension that they felt, but this is how people worked it out, you know, that kind of guidance during this process could be helpful, because there's certainly some hot-button issues that could be a sticking point. So whether that's part of the process throughout, or maybe it's part of the process where, you know, the small committee comes up with certain things and then runs it by somebody like that, but for me, I feel like that's important. Having a resource like that is important for this process.
The last time we had that, when we had a regional school agreement, you know, I was on it, head of the member of our Finance Committee, Rick Anderson, he was on it. And you had lawyers that were there, and some of the things that were discussed, we did some changes, you know, as far as eliminating some names of schools and things like that, some cleanup, but some of the funding parts of it, such as the statutory, it was really not discussed or assumed that it was and things like that, so it was a real hot topic. And what we need to do is whoever is there to look at it on a financial aspect, too, make sure that both towns are being treated evenly as far as state funding and things like that, so. Probably getting somebody from the state maybe to sit on it, they would do that, or, I don't know, just...
Yeah, Dan, I think you were in the 2017 version of this committee, I think, I was on the 2020, it's, we've done this a couple of times recently. Yeah, it'd be worth reaching out to Mars or Desi, I know they've helped in the past.
Yeah, so Mars, we are reaching out to Mars, so they would certainly look at it, and the Desi does have to approve it, so they would certainly be involved in the process. Very good feedback. I guess the only, kind of more, if you can help with this, in terms of selectmen representation, do you have a sense of, would that be, you think, one person or two people? Again, we'd really like to, what we don't want to do is create a subcommittee and then have you guys kind of come back and be like, hey, what are you doing? So do you have a sense of what that may look like from your perspective? What you folks would like to see?
Me personally, I would think it would be like one selectman, one member of the Finance Committee, and one member of the School Committee, and, well, now you have a town administrator, too. So now you got eight people from each town, you got, you know, now, you know. So maybe four members representing Whitman and four members representing Hanson. But I mean, there should be a member of the School Committee representing the School Committee from both Whitman and Hanson, I would think. And then a selectman from both towns, and head of, maybe FinCon member from both towns, town administrator from both towns. That is what, eight people? Is that too much?
Yeah, I mean, again, I'll defer, you guys are kind of the governing body, so I defer to you, right? And so I don't know, to the chairman's comments, I kind of agree, like, I think smaller is better, because it has to go through a rigorous approval process, and it's transparent, and the towns have to vote on it, so it's not like we're going to just put something in a closet and no one's going to see it. I just don't know what capacity you'd feel comfortable kind of in charging a selectman to maybe kind of help push that forward in a smaller group, but again, I defer, I defer, I'm going to ask the same question of Hanson, they may have different opinions, so I appreciate this conversation, because I think it's helpful.
For me, I think it definitely needs to include at least one selectman and a town administrator.
Great, great, awesome. Anyone else?
I think that makes sense to me, something, I would say, you know, not more than 10 total members for just the sake of, even 10 is a lot, but it's manageable.
You really don't think a member of the Finance Committee should be there? I mean, they're the ones that either, they're speaking from the residence point of view as far as the cost factor and stuff like that, I mean, I don't know, it's just my thought.
Do you want to weigh in on it?
Yeah, I mean, well, I guess, I guess just a friendly reminder regarding the Finance Committee as well, is that their charge, according to the bylaw, is to, is to make recommendations to town meeting on items that have a direct financial impact. So, you know, while a new regional agreement might have some indirect financial impacts, I wonder if it would have, you know, a lot of direct financial impacts. So, you know, hearing, hearing the input of smaller might be more efficient and smoother, just, that's, that's my thought, is, we can, we can find out from, from Rick Anderson, you know, if they want to participate, but that might be an area where they don't, they may not have a direct recommendation to town meeting on whatever the final thing is.
But him having more knowledge would help us.
Sure.
Great, awesome. So again, this is the conversation we, I appreciate having, we appreciate having, much would prefer to have this rather than come to you and be like, hey, we, this is what we did. So I think in the spirit of trying to collaborate and work together, very much appreciate the feedback and the time, so thank you very much.
Thanks for coming, Chris. All right, moving along here, COVID-19 update, Chief Clancy.
Good evening, Wood, Lincoln. The town saw 32 positive cases this week, it dropped down 26 cases, but we still ranged, I want to warn you, we still had a 7.53 positivity rate. That is in direct correlation with the number of tests we did, so we did 30, we had 32 positive, 425 tests for the 7.53 positivity. Just keep that in mind, we did drop 26 cases. This is part of the anticipated drop that we envisioned happening as outside activities move outside in the summer months. We can only hope that it'll keep going down. As you've seen on the news, some of the vaccination statuses have changed, we're still waiting for direction from the state. We saw Moderna went to five years and older and younger. We will look into stuff in the future, but currently, there is no, no plans currently to move forward with that. We're waiting to see where it comes for the adults under 50 and healthcare workers, and we'll look at the whole system and we'll talk about it then. We're supposed to be having additional home test kits, they were supposed to be delivered last week, we've been assured they'll be here this week, maybe. If they show up, there is a plan, I talked to the Board of Health briefly today, there's a plan, we'll hand those out at Whitman Day, we'll be able to distribute those to the public on Whitman Day, and we'll keep you posted, as always, if you have any questions, I'm willing to answer them.
What do we do with outdated COVID tests, home tests? Are they good past the date?
Well, there's a whole list the Board of Health produced, there's currently, when the tests come from the Commonwealth now, they're going to come with stickers updating it. The 7/10, it's a number that's stuck in my head, July 10th of this year is one of the ones we have downstairs. We have two boxes left of those, we're waiting to see what the dates are on the new ones, but we're supposed to be receiving stickers to expand that test date out for another two months, at least, it was two or three months. As soon as we get that, we'll update.
It's a question my wife had, because she says I always get it out of date next month.
But part of the reasoning, too, is that, especially since we now found out that we're getting more, rather than going through a lot of manual labor and getting stickers on, on ones that say they're expiring on July 10th, even though they aren't now, according to the Food and Drug Administration, we're still on track to hopefully get out to residents all of the existing batch that we have, since we know that we have a significant number coming, just to, for efficiency's sake, since we know we have more coming, what's the point in putting a bunch of stickers on things, let's just keep pushing them out.
What do we do with the ones that, well, we say the ones that say July 10th? If they're good for another two months, I mean, if you don't, if you're having no COVID feelings or anything like that, you don't use them, it just sits in your closet?
So, and one of the things, so our plan is to get them all out before July 10th, and then the other thing is, is there is a sheet that is available at each place, library, town hall, senior center, where the rapid test kits are being handed out, that shows the later date that the Food and Drug Administration now says they're available. We just didn't want to go through the whole thing of putting stickers on them.
If you look at the liquid capsule portion of the test, the dates on those are usually significantly longer than what the box is.
Okay, thank you.
And just to reiterate, we're, we're still giving out tests daily. Here at Town Hall, we have a table set up, the library, and...
Senior Center.
Senior Center, okay.
Every day, there's, there's more, if needed, there, every day, staff is loading them up there, and they continue to be, to be picked up by residents, which is great.
All right, moving along, Chairman's Report. Just something I brought back, we had this for a while under the previous chair, and traffic delays. I think we, on Auburn Street, I think we've all, over the last week to 10 days, have received a significant amount of complaints regarding the work being done on Auburn Street. We understand that there is significant impact to people living down there, Beaver Street, Auburn Street...
Og Memorial Homeland Drive.
Og Memorial Homeland Drive. We're trying to work through it. We ask people to be patient, follow the signs. With the size and scope of the project, it's quite a large undertaking, but it is critical infrastructure for the town, it needs to be done. This is not any developer building more, this is major water and sewer work, and it needs to be done. So we're asking for your patience, but we are aware of the complaints and trying to, on a daily basis, figure out a better way to do things.
Very good.
I just want to announce that through Chief Clancy and Town Administrator Heineman, we discovered there was a, basically a typo in the ratified firefighter's contract, Local 1769. It was a simple typo saying 22, where it should have been 2023. It has been changed, and it's been signed by myself and the President of Local 1769, drafted by Michelle McNulty and Leah Burrell. It was pretty smooth, it possibly could have been, if not caught, but both sides came together and worked it out, and that has now been changed. Speaking of legal services, I know this was in the read file, I put it in there, we need to approve a rate increase, increase for Murphy, Lemire and Murphy. The last increase came in 2020, July 1st of 2020, this will be another $5 an hour, which, given, given the climate that we're seeing right now, it's a gallon of gas. So I would look for a motion to improve the rate of $205 an hour effective July 1, 2022.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I think I understand, you know, I read through what they, the letter that they sent, but it would be better, I think, if this, this was done as part of the budget process. It feels a little funny to me that it's, it's doing, we're doing this now, and it's going to affect fiscal year '23, and we've already kind of set the line, you know, so ideally, I think they understand our budget process, you know, so for them to, to give us a heads up and have us work this in, otherwise, I feel like our estimates are going to be off on the line. I know it's not, it's not a huge amount of money, but all things being equal, it'd be, it'd be better if it was done as part of the budget process.
I, I understand what he, what he's talking about, but we're, we've basically gone through all the contracts except for one. So we will not be using our lawyers as much as we have last year, because the, you know, we dealt with the contracts and they were there, overlooking them, so whether or not we can cover the increase in this year's budget line item is the question. I understand your point of view, but it's whether or not we can cover it, and when we get towards the end of the budget, you know, do we back off a little bit from calling our lawyers for any little thing and take a chance? It's a question, but I do understand Sean's concerns.
I, I think it's well deserved, and yeah, to Dan's point, we finished most, all but one of the, the union contracts, so this should be a later year, although Council's here today, so you never know.
There definitely are things going on. I agree with what Sean has to say, and again, this is one of those variables that I think are just fluid, where kind of reactionary on this, that they came to us after. The good news is, we probably won't see another one for a couple of years. All right, so motion, second, we've had discussion, all in favor?
I'll say yes.
Unanimous. Okay. Keep moving on. All right. Seek a motion to, for the FY '23 annual appointments, as posted in your packet. And to save the time of reading them all up...
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Announce boards and committee vacancies, Lincoln.
Sure, so briefly, there are openings currently because of members deciding not to re-up, or for whatever reason, on the affirmative action advisory committee, the bylaw study committee, the capital committee, conservation commission, economic development, alternate member on the conservation commission, economic development committee, fair housing committee, historical commission, an associate member, recreation commission, a non-voting member on the cultural council, and an associate membership on the zoning board of appeals. I have been in contact with members of most of these committees, certainly the zoning board of appeals, cultural council, and the capital committee and bylaw study committee to seek some input from existing members about other members of the community who may want to participate, but certainly it would be great if anyone is interested in, you know, who's hearing this now, is interested in exploring membership, please do get your membership, your interest in to info@whitman-ma.gov. There's also the information online where you can put in your resume and the committee or committees that you're interested in. So we'll continue to seek membership in those committees.
Thank you.
For your members.
And do we have the, all the vacancies listed online on the website?
I believe so, and I will make sure when we leave this meeting, yes.
Thank you. All right, next up, act, act on the resignation of Tina Vassal from the position of member of the Whitman Cultural Council effective June 13, 2022. Motion, have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And seconded with regret.
Right, can I make a comment?
Go with discussion.
I believe that, Lincoln, this, you and I had that conversation with people that, that were on the cultural council and that were not showing up, or was that something?
It was a recreation.
Oh, it was recreation, okay, my error. Since we have a member of the cultural council here, do we have anybody in mind?
That's coming up.
I think it's the next item that he's got.
Oh, is it?
Coming up, Dan.
Okay, my error.
All right, so let's vote on the resignation.
Okay.
I motioned and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, real quick, before 7:30, all right, we have three, three applications to fill two existing vacancies, but did we just create the third, Lincoln?
So, so the, the third is created because someone's term is up at the end of this month, and they've chosen not to seek reappointment. The other two openings are because either it wasn't filled or because of a, an immediate resignation.
Okay. So at this time, we have three applications, they were in your packet. I will seek any nominations. If I find that.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to appoint, in the order in our packets, Brittany Cavalo, Adriana Di Stefano, and Kristy Zemagney Toomey, to those three vacancies, to the cultural council.
We may have to amend that motion, so if we're going to take them in order, Mrs. Zemagney Toomey would be July 1, correct?
Right, so, yeah, so we just need to be clear who is being appointed to which one, right? Exactly. So there's one beginning July 1, and then two, immediately through June 30, 2023. So we just need to be clear who those two are, and then who the person is who would be appointed through June 30 of 2025. Does that make sense?
Yes. Yeah, I can amend the motion to, alphabetical order work for everyone, yeah, keep it easy enough for Lori. So it would be, I believe, Cavalo, Di Stefano, and Zemagney Toomey, in that order, so, Mrs. Zemagney Toomey would be the effective July 1.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just a quick question, did Dawn's letter, did she have a preference about who was going to be, who was going to take which? Sorry, Dawn, in your letter to the Board, did you have a preference on who you wanted to nominate for which specific seat?
That was at the time when there were two openings, and we since had a member resign, which was Tina, who didn't have the ability, based on her personal and professional obligations, so that third opening opened up. So it really would be my pleasure to have all three of these candidates be appointed to three upcoming opening vacancies. I know two are immediate, based on the current openings, and then one is effective with the member finishing out through the end of June 30, so I think the third is...
You don't have any preference for...
No, no preference.
Yeah, we're only talking about what, two weeks?
Yep. All right, motion and second, we've had discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Congratulations, thank you. All right, seeing at 7:30, we're going to have to adjourn, open meeting and move into executive session. This evening, we'll have three, four executive sessions. Need a drink of water, since I got to read them all. The first will be executive session pursuant to mass general law, chapter 30A, section 21, subsections A1, to discuss the physical condition of mental health rather than the professional competence of a police department employee. At 7:35, we'll begin another executive session pursuant to mass general law, chapter 30A, section 21, subsection A1, to discuss the physical condition or mental health rather than the professional competence of a police department employee. When that is finished, we'll move into a separate executive session pursuant to mass general law, chapter 30A, section 21, subsection A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation relative to a claim by the Whitman Police Union and Union member as an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, as declared by the Chair. Finally, we will finish with the executive session pursuant to mass general law, chapter 30A, section 21, subsection A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for the negotiation of benefits for all non-union town personnel, i.e. town accountant and non-union personnel.
Is he going?
Yeah.
So I need a motion and second to move into executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Needs to be a vote by voice. Needs to be a vote by voice, Sean?
Yes.
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 And I will vote yes, we are in executive session. Okay, we are back into open session and executive session. I do need to announce some votes. The board has voted unanimously to approve a three-year contract for the town accountant, and the board has voted to come to an agreement on COVID-related payments for non-union personnel unanimously. Back to our open agenda. I'd like to entertain a motion to consider Robert Curran to the position of Assistant Inspector of Buildings, Building Commissioner for a one-year term through July 1, 2023.
June 30.
June 30, 2023, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, a discussion?
No.
All in favor, unanimous. Okay. I entertain a motion to consider appointing John Alt and Dan Driscoll to the position of Assistant Wiring Inspector for a one-year term through June 30, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, at this time, we need due to Mr. Bazanson stepping away.
Mr. Chairman, you got one more Assistant Inspector.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll entertain a motion to consider appointing Gary Young as Assistant Gas Inspector and Assistant Plumbing Inspector for a one-year term through June 30, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, at this time, with Mr. Bazanson stepping down, the addition of Sean, it's opened up a position to appoint a member of this board to serve as an alternate delegate to the Plymouth County Advisory Board through June 30, 2023.
Anybody volunteering?
You're the delegate, correct?
I'm the delegate, just letting everybody know, I'm the delegate, I usually go there. The meeting is in Plymouth when we have our meetings, and we just finished our budget meeting, so. Actually, I think, Sean, you were looking at the budget meeting when you were looking at the file. 99.9% of the time, the alternate doesn't have to go to Plymouth. If they choose to, they can go and sit and listen, they just can't vote. But I mean, I think Brian might have gone maybe once or twice in all the years he's been my alternate, because I always go to those meetings. And actually, they wanted me to be on the executive board, but I told them I had too much of a plate at this time. So it's not that big of a deal, so if somebody wants to do it.
Way to sell it, Dan.
What time are the meetings?
Huh?
What time are the meetings usually?
Seven o'clock at night. It's in Plymouth at the, what's the building? Used to be, it used to be the old.
It's the county, it's the county building.
County building.
Right by Jordan Hospital.
Yeah, behind it.
I'll do it.
There you go. Okay, then I'll motion Justin Evans, who'd be my alternate to the Plymouth County Board of Commissioners.
All right.
Will you second that one? Second.
Andrew Boyd, yeah.
All right. Discussion, anyone else? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous, Justin has been appointed.
You want to fill that out?
Sure.
Okay, next up, act on the request of Richard Rosen on behalf of McWiggins Pub to conduct the 12th Annual McWiggins Pub 5K Road Race on Sunday, September 25, 2022, and to close off Legion Parkway from 12 noon to 5 p.m. Also, he's requesting a one-day liquor license to serve from a tent set up at 16 Legion Parkway. Obviously, subject to any receipt of the license fee.
Yep, I'll make that motion.
A second.
Just one question. Do you know if any of the residents have put any possible? He's been doing it for a long time, has any of the residents complained?
I've never heard a complaint from a resident.
I agree, it's a very good thing.
Yep.
Okay.
Fantastic event, if anyone.
I'll be there.
Has ran it or taken part in it. Would like to thank Mr. Rosen and McWiggins and the patio for holding the event. All right, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Sorry.
All right. Line item transfers, Lincoln.
Thank you. So briefly, you have in front of you what would be five transfers. Let's say in one sentence, I do think this, the fact that there are five versus 15 last year is a representation of, my editorial comment is a representation of the success of the consolidated budgets in allowing department heads to manage their budgets during the year. Or also no reserve fund transfers that were necessary this year. Certainly, I think that was probably the first year in many years, certainly in the last several. The, happy to go through them individually, or you know, you can see them there. The only, there are two changes from what was in your packet that just occurred today, relatively straightforward. The third proposed transfer from police salaries to police expenses. In your packet, we had it at $20,000. Chief Hanlon and I looked at it again today, looked at the likely overtime from the officers being out, and then also from Whitman Day, and the needed coverage for that. And so we're recommending $25,000 transfer rather than $20,000. And then the final proposed transfer from library salaries to library expenses, that's just, was accidentally transposed. So the actual transfers from library expenses, excuse me, to library expenses from library salaries rather than the other way around. Obviously, happy to answer any questions about them, but those are the five proposed line item transfers that would need to be approved by the board here and then by the finance committee at their meeting next week.
Where are the line item transfers for the police department, where does that come from?
So that's coming, that would be coming from expenses to salaries.
Okay, yep. I have no problem with that. I'll make a motion that we accept both line item transfers. Accept all line item transfers that have been discussed.
Second.
Okay, discussion, any questions? All right, all is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. July meeting schedule, July 12, does that work for everyone?
Yep.
Typically, we only meet once in July. Does anybody see a reason to?
I think, for me, I just want to make sure we stay on top of the proactive strategic planning and budget stuff. If that's the case, then I don't see why not. I don't want to, I don't want to not meet and then have it come back and kind of hinder us because we weren't proactive enough, you know? So that's kind of my big priority, but.
I think typically, we meet once in July because we're closing out and starting again. Gives Lincoln and the financial team here a chance to get everything wrapped up and present where we're going. For that July 12 meeting, this might be something that goes along with what you say to stay proactive, is the meeting I would like to establish goals and objectives for the year. So what I would ask is everyone have two or three their priorities, we'll vet them out, and hopefully establish something that evening. And I know, Lincoln, you play a part in that too. You develop yours, and that's where I see us establishing those and. If that works for everyone. All right, full business, MBTA Communities Compliance Guidelines.
So briefly, so the board recalls except for select McCain. We actually did a briefing on this back last fall. We're actually ahead of the curve. Basically, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, after that briefing, came back with these draft guidelines that are in your packet of how they are seeking, they, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, are seeking to implement the MBTA Communities Act. And what DHCD is requiring in order for the town to continue to be in compliance with this is to have another briefing, that is this, after the release of these draft guidelines. Briefly, what the MBTA Communities Act does is require that in order for a municipality to continue to be eligible for a series of state grants, most importantly, the Mass Works Grant, which is an infrastructure grant, which can be at times pretty significant sums of money for infrastructure improvements, according to the act and according to now these draft compliance guidelines from the Department of Housing and Community Development, that at least, and later on, they say at least 50 acres, but at least 50 acres of land around our commuter rail station and every commuter rail station, and also MBTA heavy rail line stations, at least 50 acres be zoned to allow by right, not by special permit, but by right, 15 units per acre within .5 miles, within half a mile of that station. So what the guidelines, what the draft guidelines suggest is that in order to continue to, so right now, we are in compliance because this is just sort of the beginning of this process. Right now, in order to continue to be in guidance, the key dates are that we, the town of Whitman and every municipality with this MBTA station would need to have a quote "action plan", and the action plan would need to be approved by April 31, 2023 in order to have this zoning. What the action plan would mean is, okay, at an upcoming town meeting, the town of Whitman will have on its warrant to zone by right this land to be in compliance with this. So the action plan isn't changing that zoning, the action plan is, is having the plan as far as what parcel would be rezoned. And then further, and again, in order to be in compliance, it would need to be adopted by December 31, 2024, the zoning change. There is no, so in order to be, and so just to be clear, the town does not have to make these zoning changes, but it would have to make these zoning changes if it was to continue to be eligible for these grants, for these state grants after December 31, 2024. So the purpose of this briefing, so-called, that's required by DHCD in this process of being in compliance with the state law and their draft guidelines is to get out there in the public that in order for the town to continue to be eligible for these grants, including the Mass Works Grant, that zoning change would need to occur by December 31, 2024. And further, prior to that, a year before that, the town would need an action plan to do that. So presumably, the town wants to work on that action plan, however, perhaps not. You know, that there's, it's not required, it's just required in order to continue to be eligible for these grants. Excuse me, so obviously, happy to take any questions about it. If the town was to move forward with having an action plan, certainly, I would want our new oncoming Building Commissioner and Zoning Enforcement Officer to be a key part of figuring out what piece of land within .5 miles of our MBTA station should be zoned. Obviously, we'd come back to the board at some point for some feedback. I'm sure there'd be some feedback also from the planning board, probably the zoning board of appeals. But you know, either at this meeting or a coming meeting, it'd be great to receive some feedback from the board as to do we want to pursue this action plan or not, so.
I have some comments on that, if I may. We have, we already have some buildings or people living in, within the region for that, right? But we also have some open land that someone can develop, and maybe we get grants for it. We also have an old factory down the line that if somebody purchases it, it can turn it into apartments and get grants to do that. So I mean, I think it, why not? You know, I mean, if it helps any developer or it helps the town.
Yeah, and just to be clear, so it would be, it would need to be rezoned, right? So it's not simply the fact that, for example, you know, is there somewhere, is there some current dwelling unit within .5 miles of the T station that has more than 15 units per acre? Possibly.
Yeah.
But in order to be in compliance going forward, having this action plan, being in compliance and having the zoning changed by December 31, 2024, it would actually need to be rezoned at town meeting.
Right, and, but, right, it can be rezoned, but it doesn't, if a developer, well, I'm going to say the Regal Building, right, the old, right, that's got the couple of furniture places. Somebody buys that, it's a good-sized building and wants to make apartments out of it, right? Would that help the town, or would he get grant, would the town get grants? Or could he get grants to do it?
So certainly, the developer could get grants to do that, like say, for example, historic preservation grants or affordable housing grants from the state or mass housing. But the town wouldn't be in compliance unless that piece of land or some other piece of land was actually rezoned. So the developer could, could develop that under, say, Chapter 40B or, you know, something else. But if it was developed under Chapter 40B and that's how the developer got zoning relief, it wouldn't count towards us being in compliance with the MBTA Communities Act.
I guess I'd have to know the pros and the cons of rezoning. You know, do we want to rezon it? And if we did, what would it bring forward? If we didn't rezon it, what would we be losing out on?
Right, so I know probably, you may have been, what do you two were on the finance committee, I think when it came up, there was an article at one time for a sum of money to develop a 40R plan down there.
It was before my time, but yeah, it was a.
It, for some reason, it never really.
I think the Economic Development Committee put that forward.
Yeah, materialized, but. I mean, I do know just from what I can remember from that issue, like if we went 40R, which, you know, mixed use, residential, obviously, some affordable, that there was a, the caveat, which was the most appealing, was for X number of years, they would actually give you a certain number of dollars per student that moved in, so, yeah. I think what Dan said, I don't know if you can find anything on that, Lori? Do you remember back when, who brought that forward?
Well, Economic Development Committee started when Greg was here, because he was in charge of that, so.
All right. We'll look, we'll look for it.
Yeah.
And just for context, that every, the land all in the immediate area there right now is zoned industrial, limited industrial, general business along, along South Avenue, and then there's general residence to the west, residence, Residence A2 to the, to the east. So needless to say, we don't have the zoning now, we know that, right? Just to be clear.
All right, so I think we can all read up on this, look into it, and we'll circle back on the 12th.
Yeah.
Quick question for Lincoln, if that prolongs any longer. Would a 40R bring us in compliance if we did it within a half mile of the?
I'm just thinking the same thing.
Yeah.
Yes, I think this is stricter, I believe, than 40R. I think, I don't think 40R requires 15 units per acre.
Okay.
I think it's less in order to have a 40R plan that the state will hopefully approve.
Okay.
Does the state need to approve that? I think that's less, I think it's like 10. But so this would need to be more, but it could still be also a 40R, right?
With the stricter requirement.
Okay.
Okay, I think that has exhausted the agenda, so I will seek motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous, thank you.